Time will be kept by Mr. Will Craig from Louis's Cafe. And questions will be presented by our News Talk AM 1270 panel, which consists of Mr. Tommy Young, who has lived in Bartra County for 14 years. He attended Georgia Southern University and served on the Adversal Council for seven years, two of which is Mayor Prokina. He is an active member of Tabernacle Baptist Church and a 2005 graduate of Leadership Bartra. He is currently the General Manager of News Talk AM 1270 WYXC. Next is Mr. Lewis DeBrow. He has been a citizen of Bartra County for nine years. He is the husband of Jennifer and the father of four sons and four daughters, as well as owner of Gatekeeper Data Backup Services. Lewis is an active member in the Republican Party, where he currently serves as Chairman and Committee-- excuse me-- Committee Member for the 11th U.S. Congressional District. We have Brandon Fullnot, an award-winning journalist and mother of two. She is currently editor of Carts or Patch. She is a University of Georgia graduate and former crime beat reporter with the Daily Tribune News in Carterville. We have randomly selected the order in which the candidates will respond to questions, starting with candidate Mike Bearden. He is a lifelong resident of Bartra County, raised in Kingston, Georgia, and he graduated from Cass High School in 1971. He married his wife Shirley with Bonn Hall, and the three of them are the two have three children together. He recently retired from Jordan Power after 38 years.
Mr. Rappaport.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
He's a good man, that sounds good.
Okay, the fourth candidate to answer questions will be who I just talked about. Mike Bearden, right here on the end, is actually married to Jen and parents to three non-christians and seven grandkids. His career included several large engineering, financial, and economic development organizations. He is a Christian conservative and Republican in that order, and he hopes to cut waste, balance the budget, and plan wisely for our country's projected growth. Steve Taylor is next. He is a lifelong Bartra County resident. I do have you in order, I am so sorry. Last time I did it, uh... Tony Tippel. Just to stop confusion, Tony, we waved a crowd for him. Thank you. He was born and raised in Bartra County and is currently employed as the Bartra County Building Official. Tony and his wife Lisa have two daughters, Lindsay and Shelley, who graduated from Bartra County. He has held multiple offices within his field and received the Building Official of the Year Award. Okay, for seriousness this time, Steve Taylor is a lifelong Bartra County resident and successful business owner. He and his wife Sandy own Taylor's Farm Supply. They reside in Carterville and Tabernacle Baptist Church. He has proven his dedication to economic development and hopes to use his leadership skills and business experience to bring jobs to Bartra County. Can I have your order up again?
Good. Quick change of data. Five, 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 that doesn't look so good.
I bet I don't miss this one up. Tracy Lewis is a lifelong resident of Bartra County. Tracy Lewis. You don't have to go twice.
Good.
Tracy Lewis is a lifelong resident of Bartra County. She is an honored graduate from both Cass High School and Mary College. Currently, Tracy owns Fast Track Delivery and Warehouse. She is an entrepreneur with other family businesses and also was Chairwoman for the Particul of Bartra County Chamber of Commerce in 2004, which was only the second woman in the chamber's history. And now I'm gonna hand it off to Tommy Young, so he can miss something.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad that you've remembered me. Good evening, everybody. We appreciate you being here and for all of those that are listening on the radio over the Internet, and we are streaming live on News Talk AM 1270 WYXC. Also want to thank Cartsville Uncut for being here as well and covering this, the Daily Tribune and the other media. If I've missed anybody, please forgive me, but that's WYC immediately. But thank y'all for covering this most important event. I was mentioning last night on the radio how key and how instrumental and important these debates are because since there is no Democratic opponent, July 31st is pretty much, everybody's under the consensus that there will be a runoff, and then you have three weeks, I believe, candidates, whoever the two of you may be, to prepare for the final vote. And at that point, we are going to have a new Commissioner take office in January. So y'all are almost halfway there on the debates. I know WBHF is having a debate sometime, and then you have two with the GOP, or I guess y'all are involved in one of them. So this is your halfway pump as of tonight. But again, thank you all for being here. To move on to the questions, first question, I believe, the taking orders of candidate Bearden, is that correct?
If you want me to be beard, I'll take the first.
Is that-- are we starting with that?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, wanna make sure. Public safety. With the alarming rate of drugs, gangs, and other crimes increasing in Bartra, what will be your role in working with the Sheriff to make Bartra the safer community?
Our children are under attack from all areas. They have been for decades, it seems. It's accelerated and the mysterious disease of inflictions of drugs has caught our county. No, we're not part of the lineup, and we don't want to be part of the lineup, but indeed, it's in every home, it seems, it's in every family. It's probably the most serious issue facing our society. It's a reflection of our society, though, and the Commissioner is the titular lead of your county. Basically, the Commissioner is the CEO of now 105,000 population in county, a very complex operation, a very large operation. What our children need most are role models through their families. What they need beyond that are mentors, interior relationships, and pressures that keep them from straying or reduces the odds that they would stray. County government can't get involved in the lives of families, families are the most important, a structure for the families, the most important institution in our society and preserving our children. But as Commissioner, I have-- if I'm on a big Commissioner, I have the responsibility to set the budget. The Sheriff administers daily operations. The Commissioner has no role in deciding how many cops are on the beat, where they go, how many vehicles are out there, but the budget is the huge responsibility, the most important responsibility in the area. We must do everything we can to ensure the Sheriff has all the resources that are necessary to back that in.
Candidate Tippel.
Yes. I'd be more than open to discuss that with Sheriff Bill South or whoever the Sheriff is at that time, as far as what kind of needs they feel like they have, if there's some way that there's some issues with the budget where we could-- and everybody knows our budget's not good right now, so they have to trade off to something else to provide whatever tools he needs to help with that. I know from the building inspection, and we already probably what we can with these abandoned buildings have called all the time, they say, you know, they're abandoned, doors are open, kids going in that, using the drug outlets, whatever, so we can do what we can to get those closed up. But other than that, I, you know, I would be very open to hear the suggestions and recommendations from-- from the Sheriff and have the best way to handle that.
Candidate Tippel.
Of course, our children are our future, and I would support the Sheriff's Department with all available revenues, and everyone knows that-- I think the Sheriff's Budget's already about 20% of all the county, but 19 million out of 104 million. So the Sheriff's Department will need more funds in the future, hopefully the revenues will increase. But if you think about our children, we spend $1.1 million a year on juvenile court. We spend $2 million on parks and recreation. Just suppose if we do increase funding, and we would have to call on more volunteers because I think the Red Department has maxed out on adult volunteers helping this kid. But if we just suppose we spent more on recreation and got some of these borderline children involved in recreation, I think that would probably be a lot of money better spent than pumping up the Sheriff's Department, even though they need the funding too. But I'm thinking with these younger kids, get them involved early and call on more volunteers to pep out. I think that's more of an answer than waiting until they get in trouble.
Candidate Abernathy.
Ethical leadership, bringing folks in, bringing the leadership in. Everybody in the county needs to be leading, and not just for the children, but if you take care of the parents that you're coming down. We've got great drug courts in town. We've got the opportunity to see young men and women get off drugs, sell drugs for 18 months. We need to utilize it. As County Commissioner, when I step in, I think that that support will be there for those people. And to see them, see the Commissioner over in their court, helping them get off drugs for 18 months. You can have the parents, you can have the children be a leader, be a leadership role, make sure we do that for the people and help court get these drugs out of the system, out of camp. We know where the drugs are. We can show them down tomorrow if we wanted to, but we can't show them all that. I want to tell you something, we're there, and everybody in Bartra County knows where the drugs are. We need to get the money behind it, we need to go show them down, get them out of camp, let them roll over and poke down.
Thank you, Tommy. That's a great question. Of course, I would like to play a huge role in working with the Sheriff. He does control about 20 million, of course, the Commissioner sets the budget, but the Sheriff's Department currently is 19 billion, a little over 19 billion out of $62 billion budget. So it's one-third of our budget for our safety. But when he tells me that there's only 200 road deputies on the road to protect my family out of 100,000 of Bartra County residents, that's not enough for me. So we need to do what we can do to give him the money that he needs, and so our deputies can be making the same thing that other deputies made, going to Cobb or Cherokee. So I'd like to be a huge role in a team process, and if I see ways that the Sheriff could improve upon the services or where he can save us some money and some services that are already being provided, then I would like to dive into the details, because the devil's in the details, and look at his budget and see where we can improve it upon, because safety is our number-one priority.
The Florida Times last year quoted an association of county commissioners of Georgia spokeswoman Beth Brown as saying, "After several years of declining revenues as a result of failing to follow the tax digest, counties are certainly feeling the impact. Many are running out of options and are making more cuts to program for services than in some cases raising the military rate." Here's the question. Bartra County has enacted and continued employee furloughs of other budget cuts than later offered earlier income incentives to further reduce expenses. How would you handle further reductions in revenue? And we'll start with candidate Tippel.
Okay. I think that's probably the most pressing issue right now in county space. We have cut back a lot on our employees. Could more be cut back? It depends on what level of service you citizens are willing to take on that. I would hope that they'll get in there, and I think everybody knows who the current County Administrator is leaving, we'll be looking to find another County Administrator. They'll sit down, go back, go over these facts and figures that are available, see if there are any places that may have been overlooked. I know the current administration has tried to do the best they could to try to see on their areas where we could cut the budget without hurting services. So there's several different options out there. It's just one of those things that I don't think anybody can sit up here and actually say what they do to win. They're in that position, they get the input from citizens to see what they're willing to take. I don't think-- there's very few people that can handle the tax increases, but I've had several people come out and tell me, you know, you don't have to raise taxes. Other people say, I'm not gonna have to raise taxes. So it's gonna depend on what level of service the people are actually wanting and those other areas where we might be able to pick up some added revenue, there might be some services that we could increase some fees on for the users that use those. Thank you.
Candidate Taylor.
You know, if revenues don't increase with the housing market the way it is, we-- the overall tax basis is down about 40%, I think, from the very high. About five years ago, the county employed 900 employees. Now we're down to 700 employees. And as Tony just said, if we start-- if we shrink employment anymore, we're gonna give up some. It's got to the point now that there is a critical mass with employees. So what we do, we gotta be willing to give up some services if we shrink any more employment. I know a lot of people say you have to trim the fat, but I think the fat's been trimmed, and I'm guilty of saying things like that myself, but now that I've looked at it and I've dove in and looked at the numbers, it's-- we're gonna start doing that, some services, if we cut any more employment, as Tony said. So I think increasing fees, like maybe the landfill or some of the other things, would be the only answer, other than heaven forbid raise taxes. And I'm not saying I'm-- I'll never raise taxes, but that'll be the last resort if I'm the Commissioner.
Candidate Abernathy.
That's exactly one of the questions that I was gonna ask to the group here today. You know, one of the things we've gotta do is we gotta link that budget closely. We can just take a few examples. We're gonna have to go out in the room, talk to people about the limitations that we've been placed on there as a government. Any business with too many limitations on it cannot function in business because it's costly to do that. You talk to the road department, and you gotta have six men to take the shovel and dig the digs because you gotta have two road signs on each end, you gotta have walkers on each end. Somebody needs to go back and go back to the state and say, there's too many people to do one little job. We're gonna have to cut limitations on government, we're gonna have to take some of those limitations off. Government's too big, too many regulations on us. We can save money, and we can save money in this budget if we could reduce some of the limitations we've placed on us and the expectation, EPA, all the different groups that are out there pushing on us. Those may be federal and state regulations, but I believe we can reduce some of those regulations, and by that we can save some money. It's not always about tax money, it's about how you look at the business. And so if I can do away with this and this, and you don't have these constraints on me, and we can do this business cheaper, and we can do it more efficiently. And I believe that's the answer to that budget crunch right now. We're gonna have to do business more efficiently, and if people want that message taken back, we gotta take it back to Atlanta, we gotta get some answers, we gotta get some of this off us so we can run this business better.
Candidate Lewis.
With decreasing revenues, it would be a challenge to not raise the military rate, but that is the last resort to me. Employee furloughs are basically a positive alternative to layoffs. And I know that Bartra County employees have been on furloughs for three or four years now, and it's affecting their lives. Some of them are having to go out and get second jobs, part-time jobs, and it's also affected the people that are the best performers, the best workers in the county, as opposed to some who may not be disqualified. So I think that needs to be something that needs to be looked at and reviewed and done away with, because employee furloughs, like I said, are just an alternative to layoffs. And yes, they have laid off almost 200, and people taking early retirements over the past few years. This is something we've got to look at because it also causes a negative attitude and apathy with employees, when they know that they gotta go work one weekend out of the month and be away from their kids because they gave up that one day a month. So I think it's something when, as Commissioner, when I am there and diving into the details of the budget, that I can help fix that problem without any raised revenues, raised taxes, or increasing the military rate.
Candidate Bearden.
If Commissioner Bearden is there, taxes will go down. That's the second most important issue facing this. The most important issue is job growth. You need someone experienced to make these hard decisions. It doesn't matter which one of us is gonna be there next year, it's gonna be a tough year, very tough year. Job growth lowers taxes. Balance belt planning lowers taxes. Business fiscal hard management, making tough decisions in county government lowers taxes. Stronger families keeps kids up in the system, that lowers taxes. There's no question in my mind that my 40 years of experience, when applied to my county, our county, that we all, that we'll find ways for taxes to come down. That's my pledge.
Okay, and we have a follow-up to that question. If revenues continue to decline, would you favor privatization in some departments and/or employee layoffs to avoid raising the military rate? And candidate Tippel. Oh, candidate Tippel.
I would look at privatization in certain departments. You know, there's some departments you could privatize, and there's some departments that absolutely cannot be privatized. Government is, in that way, not like private business. In my business, if there's a loss somewhere in my business, I'm gonna correct it as soon as possible, and I'm gonna make it profitable, or I'm gonna stop doing business, or quit selling that product, whatever it takes. But as a government, there's certain things and services that we have to provide that just cannot be privatized, and some of those is, like the court system, for instance, there's just no way that you could privatize the court system. I know out west and try around Arizona and whatever, but it really has been done with bad, bad results, and there's a few departments that we'd probably do privatize. But before I would do that, I would try to look at it and see how we can make it more profitable. But it's an option that's gonna be out there. There's just no way that you'd be very irresponsible if you didn't look at privatizing a few of these departments to save the county, you're gonna do whatever you have to do.
Candidate Abernathy.
I just like Steve on this issue. There's some things I think we could privatize some that can. Our EMC group with the emergency management that we've got going in our ambulance system. You know, we got 12 ambulances. If we decide we wanna do it, I might could make myself a real good to save $2 million or so in the first year or two, and say, I really saved something. But when Redman decides they don't wanna work with us anymore, and they're losing money like we are, then they turn around, we wind up with these people with no ambulance service for Bartra County. Right now, they're picking up 147 calls a month, 12,000 calls a year. These folks are really doing us a good job, but there've gotta be places. You're just gonna have to look at every area and see where you can privatize it, and the ones that you can't. You put a handle on them, if we lose two, that's a nonprofit section out there, that's one section, and you don't wanna do anything with it. You wanna leave that alone as best you can. Maybe we could find ways to make it more money profitable and make that money center come to us.
Candidate Lewis.
Yes, I would be in favor of some areas once I get to diving into the budget, and right now I'm trying to get elected, so I haven't dove into the budget that much, but I spoke with Clarence months ago about a couple of areas that I think that are more of a burden to us as taxpayers and to government to provide the services than they are a benefit. And so one of them is the EMS, because it is a drain on our budget. And to be able to make a tough decision and decide when it's time to exit a business that the government provides, a service that it provides. Frank Moore did that years ago. If you remember as a child, we had the Sound Howell Hospital, the old, old hospital across from Wendy's or so, a senior center now, and it was losing, it was losing in the budget. So he privatized it, he sold it, and now we have a hospital in our community that is privately owned, and thank goodness they're there. I mean, they have helped my family out many times. So yes, there are definitely areas, and when you get in there and look at the budget and listen to your employees and build the right team and have the right people giving you advice, then that's when you can make that decision and see what areas do need to be privatized because it is too heavy of a burden for us citizens, for the taxpayers.
Candidate Bearden.
Of course, in my experience, I have not owned a larger than Bartra County budget. I have different responsibilities for a budget five times as size Bartra County. I won't sit here and tell you that I know where the answers are in terms of specific beliefs, 'cause I've learned from looking backwards. Until you get into a job, you really don't know what's there, but everything's in play. We've got folks hurting all over the county. We've got a great set of county employees, but there's no doubt in my mind that we have some services that aren't needed here in time when the citizens are suffering. The Commissioner, moving forward, needs to be the advocate for the taxpayers. If I'm elected, my allegiance will be the hard-working taxpayers of the county. What we've gotta do is make tough decisions, and sometimes that will not be fun, but we need to be very careful about the fiscal stewardship of our county. If we allow our county to get into serious financial crakes, this will seem like a cave walk while we're looking at the next year, and we can't afford to do that. Everything's in play. Zero base budgeting from the ground floor, a full assessment of the entire set of organizations and services. With the Citizens Advisory Panel, happy to be beside to look through those tough issues to ensure that we see the big picture. But I'm gonna roll my sleeves up on day one, and we're gonna focus on ensuring that we get the county on a very sound footing, as it has been in past few difficult times through these challenges.
Candidate Tippel.
The county's budget is a lot different than what you have with private businesses. We are service-oriented, but there's a lot of things that the county provides that, I mean, we're gonna lose money on. It's not that we're gonna break even, but that's, you know, if it wasn't that way, we wouldn't have taxes at all. So there are areas, though, that, and I would never say, no, they're not gonna privatize any until you get in there and look at it again, and as already been mentioned, there are some areas that maybe we could privatize, but I think we'd rather look at it closely and find out in areas that have privatized, maybe those areas in the past, see what, you know, have worked out for them. I've heard some horror tales, some of the things that have been mentioned tonight, and some areas that have privatized, and definitely don't wanna go there, don't wanna revent the will, so check with other areas and see if it's worked for them. Might be something we can do. But there again, till we get in there and look at everything we've got. Keep this in mind, anytime you privatize something, the county loses a certain amount of control over. As long as it's run by the county, you expect that the county employees that are running that service are going to take care of the people, they're our home people. It's not, there again, it's not a profit-driven situation, so they're more likely to give better care to the citizens there served. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to welcome all the candidates and say thank you for being here, and to just say, all of you here assembled at the House of Representatives County, how tickled I am to be living in a county where we don't have a single Democrat bud in our country. Prior to the passage of Obamacare, then House Speaker Nancy Pelosi said that we had to pass the bill to see what was in it. Once the bill passed, we saw that it was a monstrosity that worsened healthcare delivery and doubled the direct cost in under two years. Today, a hot-button topic is yet to be voted on, the T-SLOSS bill. The question, "Do you support the Transportation Investment Act? And if so, have you read the text of the bill to find what hidden provisions it may contain, which might make us regret passing it later?" And we're gonna start with Ms. Rappaport.
I've looked at this T-SLOSS bill and looked at it and looked at it. I've looked at everybody from Chamber of Commerce viewpoint to the state, Jeff Lewis at the transportation, Tracy, and I've looked at everything I could look at, and I know you're not gonna get this out in 90 seconds, but as far as the T-SLOSS, it would be great if we could take the highway, $10 million tax, make 10-year tax, and a $1.00 tax, but the $18, $19 billion that's gonna bring in, if we, in our district, there's 860,000 voters in this region one that is gonna be representing, Bartra County be part of that, with those 15 counties, and they may vote this year whether we do or not. And if they do, according to what I could gather, that that tax revenue for that 15 feet county, that region one, is gonna hold that money, and it's not gonna be spread out all over the state. We're not gonna be paying. That was my radical move. I was not gonna play the take-or-go, I could avoid it. I would tote the signs up down the highway. But I think what we see now, we use a $1.4 million, billion dollars from Bartra County that we could assess, bringing it in the county. I'm still in the learning mode for this, and I'm leaving myself open here. We're gonna face this, and on July 31st, we gotta know, and we gotta vote, and I'm trying to educate myself as much as I can, that we need to get these roads finished up. We gotta get it, but I don't want roads hanging out there half-done. I want complete funded projects that are gonna be substantial, we can get them done. This could be your goal.
Thank you, candidate Abernathy, for that comment.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Lewis. T-SLOSS, you hit it headright. It is a hot-button issue, and I'm still in the middle of research as far as which way I'm gonna do, and I encourage all of you to do the same. They have given it back to the citizens for us to vote on, and you know, the timing? No, it's not perfect. But do we need the roads? Yes. I am in logistics. I have been doing fast track delivery for 24 years, and I can tell you, from hearing drivers, truck drivers, being a dispatcher that I've been and making those decisions, it is, our roads in Bartra County and the whole state of Georgia are some of the worst in the whole nation, and we need to finish these roads. So if this T-SLOSS does not pass, you look at, well, what's the other option? It's gonna be a harder job for whoever the next Commissioner is to come up with the roads, or either we're gonna have to deal with what we have and drive along the roads that we have and the ones that are not complete. So I encourage each of you to look up and research. There's, I got a couple of websites for you. There's www.t-dash-sLOSS.com is a positive, and then there's connectgeorgia2012.com, they're all for it. And then this Saturday, there is a forum for some people to T-FOR. And then this Saturday, there is a forum for some people, the T-Party and the GOP has put together that are not for it. So as soon as I make up my mind on this, I will be transparent and make that known. But right now, I am still in the research stages of T-SLOSS and whether I support it or not, about 50/50.
Mr. Beard.
I've finished my research and I'll be coming down. I'm coming to sit a little bit here up here. I started my career professionally with the Highway Department in 1967. My last job, senior vice president with the 15th largest architectural engineering company in the country. I made a lot of living off building roads. If I'm elected commissioner, we'll take a look at this issue. We'll provide the creation of a project management office in the office of commissioner and we'll take advantage of my deep experience from my home county to build this, these needs that we have, and we do have needs, at a later time when there's not a recession. Now is not the time to raise taxes. We'll save 25 to 30 percent. I can take you shirt and sleeve with projects that I was intimately involved in in other counties where when a county did the work, they did it 30 percent less than the GDOT did and they did it 60 percent quicker. There's no doubt in my mind, we take and turn our control over to a regional government mechanism, that we have eroded further what's harming our country whereby we're not having local governance. We're a large county. We're 150,000 people. There's no reason for us to link our future to other folks who don't have our interest. Barco County's got a very promising future. We're gonna bring jobs here and those jobs will bring growth. So we will have to do some corrective measures, but not this way. No to T-SLOSS.
Mr. Tippel.
I have mixed feelings on this T-SLOSS also. I've been doing a lot of research on it. Uh, for those that are not familiar with it, basically Georgia's valid to the regions. And we're in the Northwest Georgia regions, which made up of 15 counties. And it's basically north of Cobb County, I'm gonna do Northwest Georgia. It's, it's kinda like we got a silver barrel. If we don't, if we don't pass it, then the state's not going to allow these guns or maybe in Barco County that might help industry. But there again, you go around and say that I'm gonna vote another penny in sales tax on myself. Uh, you can say, "Well, you know, if we do that, then maybe this will get more of the industry and maybe we can lower the taxes when we get the tax base back up." Uh, Georgia is about 47 to 48, I think, as far as the amount of money that we spend on our roads compared to the other states. And that's what they're saying. It's Tennessee, you know, out there with the other states around us are, are going to be able to get the synergy more so than we will. Uh, out of that 1 percent sales tax that they're talking about, uh, 75 percent will go toward the, these roads that benefit the region as a whole. 25 percent of that amount will come back to Barco County and be able to use on our roads. So, you know, that's something to think about there. I despise everybody to really pay attention to what this is about and, and just vote your heart on it on July 31st. Thank you.
Mr. Penn.
As county commissioner, you can't take a position on T-SLOSS. It's voted on by the people and the commissioner acts accordingly after the vote. The commissioner never takes a position on any SLOSS. But a few points. Barco County gets 25 percent of the total revenue in the 15-county area. We're gonna pay in, Barto, Floyd, and Pauling is gonna pay in about half the sales tax in those 15 counties. That's half the population lives in those three counties. We're gonna get 25 percent back in this county. But, uh, as elected officials, you really, as a, an elected commissioner especially, we can't take, the commissioner cannot, he's not allowed to take a position promoting the SLOSS tax of any kind. And, uh, that's the position I would take. And the good thing about the T-SLOSS is it's voted on by the people. If the public wants it, I gotta go and do it. And we're gonna take that money and, and, and bring jobs in here with these new roads. And I'm not a civil engineer, but I know that roads can create jobs. Education is number one, but the roads is right behind education as far as bringing jobs in.
Thank you. Before we get to the next question, Tracy, a big, the shameless plug. There is a forum this Saturday, right here in this room, 10:00 AM, to discuss this very topic put on by Gail Immelt and the Barco T-Party and the Barco Republican Party. So if you're interested in learning more about this topic, please go listen.
Uh, Louis, and then Clarence Brown.
Clarence Brown. That's what I'm saying. (laughter) We're having Jeff Lewis, uh, one of the candidates just said Jeff Lewis is our DOT representative in the area. Also have State Senator Barry Lauter built. Uh, we, I have them lined up to be on News Talk Amptol, 7WYC in the upcoming weeks. Uh, we will have them on, uh, for a couple hours during our live drive to five program from 5:00 to 7:00. So you may wanna, uh, stay tuned for that. Those of you on Facebook, you will post it there. Uh, but it ought to be very, very interest, interesting and stimulating, needless to say, and very informative. Uh, moving along to the next question, this is an economic development question, candidates. The current statistics I'm getting ready to give you are from the 2010 U.S. Census. The median household income in Barco County through the years 2006 and 2010 is $49,216 and Pauling $62,348 and Cobb $65,522 and Cherokee $66,320. The University of Oklahoma State Economic Development Department has estimated for every payroll dollar that is created, that dollar circulates in the community seven times before it leaves. As commissioner, what would be your plan to increase this level of per capita income which could significantly help increase the county tax base and create jobs? And I believe we're starting with, uh, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, that is my number one priority. Economic development is my highest priority, which is jobs, jobs, jobs. Cause I, I believe that equals joy, joy, joy when you get your paycheck. Now, what I've found out knocking on doors is a lot of people that aren't working or cannot find work, there's a lot of negative attitude and apathy. So it makes me wonder, those numbers are very alarming of how awful we are with our surrounding counties. So maybe we need to work with the Department of Labor and see exactly all of those that are unemployed, who actually wants to be employed. But, uh, there are all type of jobs that we need to get back into this county. Uh, I'm for the blue collar, the white collar, and everything in between. And we have people that have skill sets for those certain jobs. So yes, we need to increase our median household income compared to the, uh, other counties that you have mentioned. And yes, that will be a high priority of mine and I will be, want to be more involved in economic development and in giving these jobs to Barco County than any commissioner that I've ever seen, not only in the state of Georgia, but in the nation. I have no problem with going out to, uh, anywhere, New Jersey, Utah, China, wherever I need to go to talk a business or industry and to come into Barco County and locate near so our people can have the jobs that we so need. And it will, every dollar, as you said, turns over seven times. So think about the ripple effect of how it affect our, our Barco County.
Candidate Perry.
This county's come a long way. Those numbers are driving this area, but I can remember what it's like when I raised a cash flow when my mom raised here and there. This is the reason that I'm running. I don't talk about jobs. I've done that. My job was as an advisor for 500 companies with plans across this country. I've been writing off 20 different clients that all of you recognize. I wanna put my sons back on and I wanna go to Midwest. I know what they need. I know what they're looking for. I don't wanna sit here and wait on them to come to Barco County besides what we would accept them. That's not the way you sell. I want to go sell Barco County, which has the best story in this country for my clients. I wanna bring those high-paying jobs here. The primary target is the sub-ponent, the senior segment of the automobile industry. You're looking to them now. I've got friends here who are part of my advisory council who have come from Ohio that says right on my, "We need to sell Barco County like it has not done before." I'm not saying that to get a job. I'm not running for a job. I'm running because it's the gift that thing, based on my experience. I can't think of anything better in my life right now than to serve my county by taking advantage of my career and bring jobs to Barco County that otherwise wouldn't even know we're here.
Candidate Tippel.
That is a big difference, you know, compared to Cobb County and Cherokee County and Pauling County. You also have to realize that those counties are more in direct contact with Cobb. We all face their challenges further to get closer to alignment. Normally, your pay skills are higher, but that doesn't mean that we can't do anything here. I do feel like once we start coming out of this recession type area, just due to our access to, uh, 75 to the lake, we have a lot of, a lot of amenities, also people wanting to locate here. We do have that 700-acre industrial park at Cass White Exit, uh, this SLOSS that everybody's just voted to extend. Out of that, we're looking to try and get that paid off, which will give us a bargaining tool to get a good company in. Those who are in the last, uh, that maybe attended the last debate, we're in that little bit. But it gives you a bargaining tool, be able to buy a product to somebody. Let's say a company comes in here that, that'll have some of those $20 an hour jobs, you know, uh, something that would really help boost their median income, uh, to allow these people to buy more cars, buy more houses in Barco County. Uh, talk about houses. There was a builder I talked to three years ago, four years ago, I guess, and he, he sat down one night, couldn't sleep. He came up with a list of 400 people that worked on that house. My time about, uh, the magic with a housing industry dropping off those 400 people working these houses, that does a lot to affect our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Taylor.
You know, I think it's a shame that our county is surrounded by counties that has a household income of 12 to 15,000 dollars, more than Barco County. And those jobs are not people that work harder. Actually, the lower paying jobs, the lower the paying the job is, the harder you actually work. People that make minimum wage will never walk in my doors of my business and buy any products because they're spending all their money going to the grocery store and buying food for their families. We need, we don't need just jobs anymore. The South has always been known as low taxes and low-paying jobs. Let's take our company to the South because labor's cheap and the taxes is cheap. Let's keep the taxes low, but let's, let's get jobs, quality of life jobs, jobs that people can not only feed their families, but buy cars and homes. And that will help our housing problem far more than anything else with it. It'll be the greatest stimulus in our community. If we can land a, a company like a, uh, auto company or big parts company, some white-collar jobs, that's the greatest stimulus for our community. We don't need the government to give us anything. We just need to hook to work our resources and we've got some potential great property in the industrial park that's just waiting on a good candidate. And it's gonna happen and it will happen soon.
Thank you. Candidate Abernathy.
As we look on Barco County, we're looking at Pope County, Gordon County, Floyd County making less than Barco County and everybody else makes more in Barco County. So as we look at that, we've got 49,267 people in the workforce in Barco County. How do we motivate, how do we roll it seven times? How do we cause indirect funding? How do we increase the money? We're gonna have to use that almost. And the fact that we are of a low income, a low labor cost, and we can use that to draw more labor in here, use our resources. And then we still have 4,561 people unemployed in Barco County. But how am I gonna take this and increase the salaries? How are we gonna take it? We're gonna take our resources. We're gonna do just like everybody, everybody's on the same sheet. We gotta increase this. But what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to look at it and say, "Okay, we're gonna market back that we are low income." Instead of it being a negative, let's make it positive. Bring your business here. Bring your business in. When it gets here, we're looking at different tiers of salary ranges. You're gonna have management, you're gonna have laborers, you're gonna have the different people of education levels doing work. And we don't want people unemployed. We don't want 4,561 employees, uh, people sitting out there not working. And that's probably just people that are actively seeking employment that are on the record. And we may be double that amount of people that have just given up, as Tracy said a minute ago. They have become so negative, they don't think they can get anywhere. So we've gotta give them the work.
Thank you, candidate Abernathy. Going back to the county budget, cuts have also affected Sheriff, Fire, and EMS operations, including the loss of overtime and holiday pay for some employees. As commissioner, how highly would you prioritize public safety? And we'll start with candidate Beard.
The first and most important function of government at all levels is protect our free will at our local level. And where it relates to all, we're speaking tonight, the judicial, law enforcement agents is job one. That's in large part why our constitution sets it up so that the sheriff is a publicly elected official, even though we're talking commissioners here tonight, where all want to be commissioners, uh, that sets the budget. There's nothing more important than fundamental safety and protection of our, we can't compromise that, uh, but these are tough times. I don't know the specific answers on what level of budgets, uh, but I was managing control over a $10 billion program for a long time. And I'm eager to roll my sleeves up. I'm eager to learn from the ground floor of the ins and outs of every part of the budget, especially the law enforcement side. But again, job one is law enforcement. Everything else revolves from that. Without protecting our freedom, safety, and comfort of our home, nothing else really matters. So we can't allow that to be eroded. But that's not an easy decision to say, and I'm not my hand to propose here and say what I'm gonna do one way or another. Again, I'm not hunting for a job. I'm hunting for a public service motion. Uh, but you can rest assured that if I'm there, your interests, citizens' interests will be best served first.
Candidate Tippel.
Well, unfortunately, whenever, you know, times get like they are now, there are certain departments that get busier, such as Sheriff's Department, the court systems. Uh, you know, there's people breaking in, stealing material, trying to sell it. Uh, I don't know how much of this for that drugs we're talking about or how much is putting food on the table. So anyway, keeps that, that department busier than what they were during the good times. Uh, I think it's been mentioned about morale of the people. Yes, it'd be good to try to find that money to get their, you know, to do away with some of these unpaid holidays or, or things like that, but we've got to find it. Uh, and it goes back to what we talked about at the beginning. If we give more money here, we've gotta take more money here, we've got to raise taxes or something. You can't, like I say, you've got to, uh, order, raise the bridge. You can't, you can't go both. So, I mean, it's an area that needs to be looked at. Uh, with drugs, it seems like this is getting worse and I know it puts a bigger toll on the Sheriff's Department. So, yeah, I'd love to look at it closer. That's, that's just something we have to do once you get in there. Thank you.
Candidate Taylor.
Public safety has to be at the top priority of, of all money. Public safety in the court system is gonna keep going regardless of anything else. We've gotta protect our citizens. And morale is low, but it's low in other departments in the county, not just the Sheriff's Department. But, uh, you know, in a bad economy, crime seems to be worse than it is in a good economy. And that's probably the cause. These, these low-paying jobs that we've got, we keep going back to jobs. But if, uh, our citizens had great-paying jobs, I think we would have less crime. So, uh, if we, if we can still, it still goes back to jobs, 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 and great-paying jobs is what we need. But, uh, as far as public safety goes, we've got to fund our Sheriff's Department. And I know that's why it would be very, very irresponsible to sign a pledge saying no new taxes because we're hoping what the future holds. That's our last resort. But, uh, we're gonna fund the court system and the Sheriff's Department and, uh, they, they'll always come first. And it's under the commissioner's budget to do that. And, uh, it's just something that we'll have to do.
Candidate Abernathy.
A $22 million budget may be crazy, but you may have to reduce somewhere else as we were just talking about. Public safety, welfare of the people have got to be the number one priority. I think that in my own heart, I've kind of over the last few months of walking and talking and that, uh, jobs are not the number one priority. Welfare of the people in Barco County is number one priority. And jobs work out of that priority because we wanna take care of the people, the safety of our children sitting here in this room today. Welfare of the people of Barco County is the number one priority. And then because we have the people at heart, we want jobs and we want safety. And we'll work together. We'll organize groups in our own to help the sheriff, to work with the sheriff, to work with the deputy. And we need to have number one priority to figure welfare of this county. And just like Steve said, all the funding's gonna go to one place. We're gonna protect Barco County and the residents of Barco County. And I don't think any commissioner that would be going in, I think the number one priority's got to be the welfare of the people in that county. That is the utmost responsibility of the commissioner. county, that is the utmost responsibility of the commissioner.
Candidate Lewis.
Yes, thank you. How highly will I prioritize public safety? Very high. I think that is what the government is here for and what it started out for. It started out as the commissioner rose in revenue, and the sheriff department, the deputies was a part of that. I remember as a child, when Wayne Self served as county commissioner, he was only in office for one term, four years, because he was a visionary, like I consider myself, he was the idea man. Do you know that he is the one that put the fire service in, into place? Before then, it was volunteer fire service. I was blessed enough to have James Bailey as vice chairman of my committee to elect Tracy Lewis as county commissioner, and he so lets me know all the time how Wayne Self is the visionary and got the firemen here. So public safety with our deputies and with our firemen, I mean, when you need help, who do you want? You want one of those. Those, they are, firemen and policemen are the true public servants of our community. Yes, we wanna serve, I wanna serve you as county commissioner, as the leader and the visionary, but they are the true public servants along with our military. So yes, it would be a very high priority of mine, public safety has got to be in place, and it is about half of our budget now, our county budget now, is contributed to public safety, sheriff, fire, and EMS, so very high priority.
Thank you. Right, this next question is gonna seem like pillows and old ground, but it's interesting that we, the three of us on the panel here, came up with these questions independently, asking input from those in our community, and so, tell by this next question where the priority is of the community and what they want asked. As we sit here tonight, votes are being counted in Wisconsin to determine the fate of Republican Governor Scott Walker, who damaged the ability of the labor unions to vote themselves lavish pay and benefits. However, Governor Walker managed to eliminate a three point six billion dollar deficit by implementing conservative, fiscally responsible policies, which did not require tax increases, massive layoffs, or shutting down government services. Our county's school board has proposed a tax increase on the people of Barto County that go for a reported budget shortfall, saying there's nothing left to cut. As commissioner, what specific steps would you take to streamline spending to avoid such tax increases? And we will start with Mr. Timber.
I, I think basically that question's been answered numerous times already, I mean, all we can do is get in there and look to see what we can do, either cut services, I mean, most of us said raising taxes may be one of the very last things you, you wanna go with, that'd be the only, if that's what the people want, keep those services up. But like I say, I, I think that's what we're all talking about tonight, finding ways to either increase the income or the tax revenue, cut out some of the things in budget that's not really necessary at this time anyway, might be more of a suspension of some services for the first, for the next year or two, that's what it takes until we get some essential board. Everybody's talking about the late one, and you know, hate to count chickens for their eggs or eggs, it sounds good, now they'll move the date back to two thousand and fourteen. If it does come in like proposed, I think we're gonna be in an excellent position where people will come again, spend the tax dollars, and go on back on. I found something pretty interesting in one of the economic development magazines that they put out here, and they say that every day, tourists spend three hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars in Barto County. That contributes six thousand eight hundred and eighty-four to the spots funded, and thirty-four forty-one local sales data, so if we get that out, it's just gonna increase this, you know, I don't know how many folks, but as you can imagine what it'll do if we can get that in. Thank you.
Mr. Pendleton.
Of course, as commissioner, you have to be fiscally responsible, and before you can actually say what you can cut, and what else you can cut that hasn't been cut now, and I have to give Commissioner Brown a little credit here, he is, like I said before, he's went from nine hundred employees to seven hundred employees. We're gonna start cutting services, you can't sugarcoat this thing and say we're gonna cut a hundred more jobs and trim the fat. We will cut services if that's what the people want, I got a feeling. When the services that gets cut, if it affects individual people, they're the ones that wouldn't wanna cut. For instance, the seniors centers, if we just say we're gonna cut those out, then the seniors wouldn't like it. Or if we cut recreation, then the, the parents of the youth that's using parks wouldn't like it. But they've, I've looked at this, and there may be a few more cuts in there, but it's, it's pretty tough, and, and they've gone a long way, but you will have to be fiscally responsible, you'll have to look through every line item and see what's available to cut. But just to sit, right off the bat, to think of something, and, and I'll be honest with you, I can't see it right now, but it's sitting in the commissioner's seat, if it takes it, it'll get cut. You'll have to provide the public safety and the court system, you have to provide emergency services, the fire protection, those things have to be provided for. Thank you.
Mr. Abernathy.
Talking about smaller government, we're talking about taking, talking about reducing, we're all gonna have to be accountable. In Barto County, we've got a budget of a hundred and fifty-seven million one hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Barto schools, that's twenty-one Barto County schools, and nine hundred and sixty-eight teachers, we're talking about, they're already on furloughs, they've already been cut back, about as hard as we can cut those teachers, and they're working for nothing. Many days of the year now, I was talking to a teacher today, and asked her, if there was any plan that she knew of in there that we could cut, I know that they've got so many ways that they're looking at, the city carver just replaced the parent for those temp services to reduce the, the fees they're paying, there's ways you can cut some over, and I think before, you jump on a one point five mill tax, which we may have to do, nobody here in Barto County may not be able to avoid that, that's sixty dollars for every hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna have in the county, and if you got a pound of law, it's gonna go up sixty dollars. I'm pro education, I want our education system to continue to be the best it can be, but we need to look at a line item budget, we need to whack away at that thing, and we need to cut her to the core before we ever come back and say, let's increase taxes, because it's gonna get to point with people in Barto County, the jobs are down, everything's down, everybody got T-spots, we've got school tax, all this gonna build goals on, and right here at the same time, practically, and we better strip this budget.
Thank you, candidate Abernathy, you're out of time.
Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Lewis. Being fiscally conservative is exactly what I've had to give in my business for twenty-four years, we're fast track delivery in the warehouse, and to make it through this great recession, which hopefully we're through with, but the past four years have been tough, so I've had to cut, you can't spend when you don't have, so you have to cut, and that is the first thing as a Republican, you wanna cut spending instead of raise taxes. And I just rebound my website over the weekend, it's www.traciforbarto.com, and I have what, what I call my Tracy's First Ninety Days Solutions. And the second thing out of five lists that you can see there is to personally meet with each county department head to find solutions to trim waste. Yes, I believe that we have had good leadership and they have trimmed, but I think that we can do more. I think that it would challenge each department head, once I look and dive into the details of their budget, and challenge them to cut it a certain percentage, or if you're five percent, two percent, eight percent, whatever it is, I think they could find those ways, and then we can use that money elsewhere, like maybe employees getting on furloughs if they so desire. And an example of somewhere where I have done this before is I won a Chattanooga Technical College Award, a vice chair in the finance and operations, we were told a few years ago to cut the budget by the governor, nine percent. We did that without losing a single faculty member or staff, and we cut the budget nine percent, and so it can be done, but it's gonna be difficult.
Mr. Beard.
My peers not all agree, except that one, the job is the number one issue here, and we further all agree that next year's gonna be tough, tough road to hoe, or anyone else when we're in there. So in my view, number one issue in the campaign is who has the most experience to handle that tough year and lead your county through these weeks. Since day one, I've had a following six-point plan. I've not changed my website, I've not changed the program, I've stayed true to my money, but what we've gotta do is a full service go review. We've got to have a full board assessment of each department head, their capabilities, whether or not they're capable of moving forward with us to the future of the promise that Barto County deserves. Then we need to go through a fooling, manage the road based budget exercise, that's not just a few months' exercise. After that, or parallel that, we'll have a full arms-length review of the tax guidance from bottom to top, then we do the hard decisions of what is our county's government's needs, what should it be doing during these tough times, how will we get through this still financially strong like we are now? And during that time, once we find out what the problems are, where the weaknesses are, we'll hire an administrator that will hold us to that plan.
Thank you, moving along, right after this question, we're gonna be taking about a fifteen-minute intervention, so I know those of you listening online and on the radio would take a break, and again, I wanna thank the media this year tonight, bartopolitics.com, Carlsville Uncut, Daily Tribune, also a special thanks to Rebecca Wong for jumping in here at the last minute and taking some pictures, I know the engineer of barriers around here somewhere, she's, I think that camera's attached to her, but anyway, she does a great job, we appreciate what everybody does. Moving along to the next question, candidates, in the last debate and tonight, all of you have said you were elected, your number one priority would be jobs. With that being said, currently, the city of Carlsville has a twenty percent free port rate, while the county has an eighty percent rate. How can the city and county jointly work together on manufacturing and industrial development with this type of gap, especially with the Carlsville-Barto County Joint Development Authority project at Cass White Road? And after you have answered this, I do have a follow-up question to ask you, and we're gonna start with candidate Taylor.
Actually, I think the city has already dropped their rate twenty more percent. I think they may be at sixty instead of twenty. But that being said, as commissioner, I would plan on dropping the rate on the county side to full one hundred percent, no inventory tax. We've lost a couple of pretty good industries recently, one real big one here in the past year, because we did have some free port. The actual site in the industrial park that this company was looking at was on the city side, I believe, so they actually left here and went to neighboring communities, but that being said, you would, you've got repercussions from being a hundred percent, you've gotta work it out with your school board, you gotta work with them and tell them, jobs or more, or maybe jobs would bring future revenue coming in, well, that far outweigh the inventory tax that's now in place, so that, that's just, to me, that would be a no brainer, we've gotta compete with all the communities up and down I-75, and in the past, some of these industries have gave us a token look, and they could go to other communities that was a hundred percent, and that's, that's a goal of mine as commissioner, is to be fully inventory tax or free port, I would fully implement that.
Thank you, candidate. Thank you, candidate Taylor, before we move to candidate Abernathy, I wanna make a point, when I was on the city council up here in Deersville, Yanmar, which provides a lot of jobs in Barto County and is a big industrial manufacturer here in the county as well, they threatened to move to Floyd County, and at that time, myself, along with city manager Larry Craft, went down to Clarence Brown's office, and at that point, the county was at twenty percent, and we said, Yanmar has already made a commitment to move to Floyd County, and the main reason, the number one reason was with also free port. At that point, Clarence Brown saw the need to raise the free port up, and he tiered twenty percent over, I believe, three years, and he capped it at eighty, so I wanted to let everybody out here know, and is listening to us, the significance of free port and the competitiveness it puts Barto against the other surrounding counties. With that being said, we'll move along to candidate Abernathy.
Thank you. Free port tax just cost us loads, John, and it went to Floyd County. We all know that, especially these folks here in Deersville, and we need to reduce that, and I think everybody's aware of it, jobs are the number one priority as far as getting in, and like we're talking about, the indirect money that's made off of the jobs has come more than cover for these free port taxes we've got, reduce this, and whoever is commissioner's gonna have to address this, but we cannot afford to have manufactured inventories sitting there at the end of the year, and some of it being burned up by, and no matter what that product is that's been made here in Barto County.
Thank you, candidate Lewis.
Free port tax exemption is a no-brainer, it is a part of my Tracy's First Ninety Days Solutions, it is to make the free port inventory taxing industries one hundred percent exempt instead of eighty percent. It will energize economic development opportunities and help existing industries. I, in my involvement in the chamber back in the mid-nineties with Phil Bridges, we pushed for this, for Clarence Brown, to, to put this on the ballot, or give us a chance to vote on it or to do it, and he did it at twenty percent increments, and now with the recession, we've been stuck at eighty. It has got to go to one hundred percent, so it is something that I will do in the first ninety days, of go into the research and the tax assessors, how it affects the maintenance and operations budget in Barto County, which is a sixty-two million dollar budget or so, is around two hundred and fifty thousand, so that's peanuts, I think in the first week we can find ways to cut that. Now, how it affects the school systems with a hundred and twenty-plus million, it's about five hundred thousand, so you're preparing apples to apples here, and if, if the school systems cannot live without that now, I have ideas, we can get a, a public-profit partnership, so we could get these industries that are used to paying that, whatever they used to pay them, and seven hundred and fifty thousand, split that up, if the county cuts it twenty-five percent, the school still needs it, maybe they could sponsor Cass High School and help with that, the money needed there, until the school systems can do without it, but it's got to get one hundred percent, and I'll do that in the first ninety days in the office.
Thank you, candidate Beard.
No doubt, free port has to be a hundred percent. Years ago, when I was that advisor, it was my job to put very complex analysis together that allowed courts to help our companies decide where to go. It wasn't my job in the early stages of those negotiations to decide where those plants were going, it was my job to eliminate counties. Anytime there's a county with a free port less than a hundred percent, it's off the list, it's gone. Non-competitive, doesn't get considered as a tall. When you get down to the short stages of deciding where those jobs go, that's when it really gets competitive. I don't want us to compete up and down, I said, but I want us to compete with Texas, I want us to compete with Research Triangle Park in North Carolina, I want us to compete, compete with Jacksonville, Florida, but right now, I want us to compete with Ohio and Michigan, where there are jobs looking to move south, there's not a place better for them to be than Barto County. The industrial park just up the road here, the Cass White Industrial Park are part of this overall equation that gives us the best story that I've told all over this country, and free port is just one of the lines that gets in the way, we've got it all together, we need to make sure that the board of education understands how competitive it is, we need to make sure the city carver's on board, we'll have a very aggressive effort if that is, if I can reach here.
Thank you, candidate Timber.
I know the commissioner has been very concerned about this, and has already planned on implementing the, so we have the one hundred percent free port, and they've been discussing with the schools, and like we've already stated before, we are running on a tight budget so it's, so it's school board, how long is it going to take to get a company in if we have one hundred percent free port? Now, true, the company we just lost, the Ford County, that I understand that's why we lost them, even though we were like seven miles closer to the interstate seventy-five and company, I mean, where they sent their company in, that's another thing we'll be looking at, and there's several suggestions on how we can overcome this difference, but it's gonna take the working coordination between the school board and the county and the cities to be able to do this.
Thank you, just a, kind of a follow-up on this, if I'm understanding this right, candidate Taylor, Lewis, Beard, all set that y'all are for a hundred percent, and all the surrounding counties around Barto, every county that connects to us has a hundred percent free port, and just to give you an idea of what Yanmar was facing, when they were here at twenty percent free port, they were paying one point four million dollars a year in extra taxes, that incited as well as making them wanna move to Floyd. With that being said, the three candidates I just mentioned, I believe, that already said y'all are for raising it to a hundred percent, are, are all of y'all in agreement that we, in order for Barto to be competitive with, with manufacturing, that we need to regulate y'all on that?
Yeah, I agree, it needs to be.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, we are going to take a fifteen-minute intervention for our radio and the community listeners, you will hear a welcome response, and for everyone else, feel free to get up, correct your turn, log in, I believe the candidates will be out circled later, we'll go back to fifteen minutes.